Twenty-second, twenty-twenty meeting. Please, Eric, the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, roll call. Commissioner Clement?
Present.
Commissioner Day?
Present.
Commissioner Franklin?
Here.
And I, Commissioner Mead?
Here.
And I am here. At this time, we have a public comment. This time is reserved for members of the audience to address the planning commission on items of interest that are not on the agenda and that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. It is recommended that speakers limit their comments to three minutes each. It is requested that no comments be made during this period on items that are on the agenda. The commission is prohibited by law from taking action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda. So at this time, is there any public comment or anything not on the agenda tonight? Seeing none, move on to number four, approval of minutes of the regular meeting of May eleventh. I move approval.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Mead to approve the minutes from May eleventh and second by Commissioner Day. Commissioner Mead?
Aye.
Commissioner Day?
Aye.
Commissioner Clement?
Aye.
Commissioner Franklin?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Item five, report and recommendation or request by Lennar Homes of California Incorporated to extend approval of vesting tentative subdivision map number two thousand seventeen dash oh one, tract nine twenty.
Good evening, commissioners. This item, this was a project that the commission approved and council approved back in twenty-seventeen. It's the Lennar Housing Project north of Hanford Armona Road. They've completed phase one, or they're finishing up phase one of the project, and they're going to be starting on phase two. They did need to demo the house that was there, and they're doing some other things, and they just don't think that they're going to be able to start by the time this map expires, which is in August fourteenth of this year. And so just to be on the safe side, they wanted to get a one-year extension, so that gives them a little bit of flexibility. So that's what this project is. If you want to know, I mean, it says in the staff report, the project was a total of a hundred and seventy-five homes. Eighty-seven of them have already, they're in phase one, so phase two is eighty-eight more homes. They sold pretty rapidly. According to the subdivision map act, they can apply for five years' worth of extensions, and it's been our, kind of, what the city usually does is it's stint for one year at a time. And so before you is a recommendation to approve, adopt resolution twenty twenty oh six, approving a one-year extension. And is that the one with the, no, it's the other one that has the, the next item has one little typo in the resolution. This one is good to go, if anyone would care to make a motion, or if you have any questions.
Thank you, Judy. Okay, I'm going to open this up to a public comment. Anybody have anything they want to comment on this? Seeing none, closed public comment. Commissioners, any discussion?
I make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty, tag zero six, approving the one-year extension for Lennar.
A motion by Commissioner Franklin?
Second.
Commissioner Day, second. Yeah, I don't see any problem with doing this at all. Like Judy said, they've been going up fairly fast, considering what we've been going through.
Yes.
So everything looks good out there, so I don't see any reason at all, so not to give them the extension. So I'll call for a vote. Commissioner Franklin?
Aye.
Commissioner Day?
Aye.
Commissioner Mead?
Aye.
Commissioner Clement?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Item six, public hearing, major site plan review twenty twenty dash oh three. A request by Wellsona Partners, John Peterson, for major site plan review approval of a seed-to-sale cannabis campus that includes delivery service, manufacturing, and a processing facility, micro-business, distribution hub, cultivation greenhouses, and food truck dining area. The site is located on Venture Place, west of Commerce Way, north of Enterprise Drive, east of State Route forty-one, and south of State Route one ninety-eight in the city of Lamore. The initial study mitigated negative declaration was prepared in conformance with the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines.
Okay.
Is this you, Judy?
This is me, and I'm, Christie just alerted me to the fact that my very first slide says major site plan review twenty twenty oh one, but it is twenty twenty oh three. So hopefully, we get through the rest of this pretty easily. Could you advance the slide, please? This item is brought to you, this is a cannabis project. It's located as Chair Etchegoyne mentioned, south of one ninety-eight and east of Highway forty-one. It's just south of Bennett and Bennett Irrigation District, or Bennett and Bennett Irrigation Company, and north of the E and C Business Park that's out there, Virgil Beard's business. So it's right in between there, and if you've gone out there, you'll see that the road is being construction, constructed. That road was, it was originally going to go in as part of the redevelopment agency. When we had redevelopment, we had money available, and then that was eliminated. Redevelopment was no longer, until we didn't have money to do the road. So a developer came forward and said, you know, he will build the road, let's do this. So, and then in the meantime, another developer has come forward that that person is working, worked with, that's Mr. Voorhees, and this developer wants to develop a cannabis campus. So they came to us and submitted an application, and you can see on your screen the components of the project, twenty greenhouses, processing facility, a manufacturing facility, an accessory building, office, and food court. Please advance the slide. This is what the site plan looks like. We are working through the details of it. There are some, maybe a few setbacks. There's the first part of Venture Place Road that goes from east to west is going to remain a public road beyond where you see that little rectangular, we don't have a pointer, we don't have a mouse available to be able to point to you, so I have to, oh, look at, Christie's doing it.
Somebody's got one.
Christie, Christie, go to the middle of Venture Place. Venture Place is the road, right there where the rectangle is.
Right there.
Right there. At that point, that, then it's going to become a public, a private drive. So there will be a gate there to enter into the development where they're going to have the greenhouses and the processing and manufacturing. On the east side of that location is where there will be a future office, food court, and then possibly some food trucks and maybe some events, any events, I'm getting ahead of myself. Events would take a temporary use permit, but, so this is the layout of the site, and our public works director and QK, our city engineer, they're working with the developer to make sure that everything is situated properly. I know that the greenhouses are right next to each other. They will either have to have firewalls after so many square feet, or they will have to have a ten-foot setback. So we're working through all those details, but this is basically the site plan. And so it will be very similar to this. And so what we're asking for tonight is approval of a site plan that's this site plan, but with some modifications, just to make it conforming to everything legally and what's within the mitigated negative declaration. Cannabis is permitted under the state law, and so this shows that it's regulated in our municipal code, not only state law, but our municipal code has it in Title Four, Chapter Eight. The site is zoned light industrial, so the use is permitted there. You can see that commercial cultivation and commercial manufacturing, distribution, and testing is all permitted in that location. I keep wanting to look up at the screen, and it's a map, sorry. So we did a sequel review. That was the mitigated negative declaration that I spoke of. That was prepared, it was sent out for a thirty-day review back on May twenty-second. That goes out to all the agencies that are affected, that may be affected by this, and you can see that we've received several responses back. All of those will become part of the record and part of the mitigated negative declaration, so any items in those responses will become part of that. And the developer will have to work through those mitigations. Is there, did I touch on the last item? And then the last item there is that all of the mitigation measures that were included in it altogether, once the mitigation measures are done by the developer, then the project is deemed to have no significant impact. And so as I mentioned, this is a major site plan review, and the developer will have to develop it per the major site plan review comments. Those were the checklists that were attached to the major site plan review and staff report. So those are, those come from all of the city departments, fire department, public works, and everybody has submitted their comments, and the developer will have to work on the plan, that's what I was talking about, modify the plan to make sure that all of the comments are addressed. So when the developer constructs the site, he has to construct it per the major site plan review and any modifications and mitigation measures in the mitigated negative declaration. Along with this, because the developer is proposing to do this in four phases, he's going to break it up into different parcels, and so once it is approved, if it gets approved, they will be submitting lot line adjustments, so that will be required in order for the project to move forward. Those are done at the staff level. Our city engineer reviews it, and then we approve it at the staff level, but just to let you know, that will be, that will be happening in the background. And then as I mentioned, if they're going to have any events out there, that, they plan to have some food trucks available for their employees on the site. That will be for the employees, and I'm not sure whether the public will be able to stop in or not, but if there's going to be large events out there, those will have to have a temporary use permit. We'll get to that in a minute, there was a comment that we received about that. And then if this receives approval, then it will expire in two years, so if they don't get started on the project within two years, it will expire, and then the site plan review will have to come back if they wanted to do it. So here, these are the different permits that are required, and I wanted to ask our city manager, Nathan Olson, to, if you want to comment on those and where we are in the process on those, and if there's any additional to this.
Good evening, planning commissioner and members. Yeah, Nathan Olson, City of Lamore. So the PDA, the project development agreement is done. That was done some time ago. So as they had the site, we knew they had the nine acres. Once they get the lot line adjustments done, and we know what portion of operations will happen on the APNs, that's when we'll submit their actually, their regulatory permits to the state. They're actually ready to go now, it's just we need to know what APNs are going to be tied to manufacturing versus, you know, cultivation and things of that nature. There is one more individual or two more individuals that are in backgrounds to be included in the Wellsona, but everybody that's been background checked to date will remain, and then we have two more in backgrounds right now, after talking with City Legal. They are going to request a name change from Wellsona to Base Camp. Again, it's just a technicality, according to the city attorney on my side, not the planning commission, but just a letter going into the file to update the name change is all we need, but we're not submitting that letter until the individuals get out of background by our Lamore Police Department. And then state licensing, how that works is once we give them their regulatory permits, it goes off to the state. The state will get back with our police chief or his designee to say, yes, they've met their backgrounds, live scans, all that, they're operating within the ordinance and the spirit of the law in the state of California, and we check a box that, yes, they've met the requirements, and then the state will issue their permits. Pretty standard. Any questions or, thank you.
And then on that name change, I did list that in the major site plan review. We refer to them, their application was Wellsona Partners. The mitigated negative declaration was in the name of Venture Place Cannabis Campus and Food Court, and so I tied them all together, and then with Base Camp, all in the major site plan review to address that, the name change, and to tie it together. Excellent. So then the recommendations before you is, this is a public hearing because we do have these items that require that. We did receive, in front of you, you have the two emails and a letter, and do we need to read those into the record or? Okay, during, once the public hearing is opened, we'll have Ms. Bailey read those into the record. And then, once you get to the, after you close the public hearing, you would be approving two separate items, and I would like to have them approved separately, so on separate motions. One would be to approve the initial study mitigated negative declaration, and then the second one would be to approve, adopt the resolution for the major site plan. And I could try to answer any questions. I know that the developer is in the audience, so if you have any questions with them, they're here.
Does anybody have any questions for Judy before I open it to public comment?
Sure. In the back of the packet was a letter to Mr. Cisco from the tribal council.
Yes.
Was there any response from him?
Yes, we received an email back, and they gave us the mitigation measures that they wanted included into the mitigated negative declaration, and those have been included.
Anybody else?
Yeah, one of the.
Sure.
The surrounding businesses of the proposed site, has, have they been contacted, and have they given any insight into what their thoughts are or possible concerns?
Yes, once the public hearing is open, then Ms. Bailey is going to read a few comments to you.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, at this time, I'm going to open this up to public comment. Anybody has anything they'd like to say about the project?
Okay, on June twenty-second, I received, actually, I want to go, I received an email with a letter attached from a tenant at fifteen hundred Enterprise Drive. She says, as a new business in good standing with the city of Lamore of the adjoining property located at fifteen hundred Enterprise Drive, suite three oh five and three oh six, Lamore, California nine three two four five, and as general manager and owner of the custom performance Cheer and Tumble Cal, I'm not sure what this says, stars dot com. Gym herein, after gym, it has been brought to my attention that the city of Lamore is conducting a public hearing today, Monday, June twenty-second, two thousand twenty, for the purpose of considering and accepting public comment for major site plan review two thousand twenty dash oh three as requested by Wellsona Partners, John Peterson, or more specifically described as a seed-to-sale cannabis campus. Please accept the following factors, reservations, and concerns regarding the gym. An established business, number one, an established business with over seven years of successful business operations, recently relocated from Hanford to Lamore, California with much positive expectation of being part of the immediate Lamore business community. Recognized business media brands, or number two, recognized business media brands, custom performance Cheer and Tumble herein after CPC and T, and I'm still not sure, Cala something, here and after Cala Heat. And this says, number three, provides a vital service to the youth of the intermediate and surrounding communities. Number four, has established national acclaim within its market. Number five, serves a hundred families with underage children and growing within the immediate community. Number six, an ambassador for the city of Lamore and the surrounding communities. Number seven, responsible for health, safety, and security of small children, their mothers, and other family members who frequent the gym at all hours of the day and night. In our opinion, a business operation as defined and described by the proposed developer operators of this type and nature presented here and after project would expose our underage youth and their family members to inappropriate activities and behavior based upon the targeted consumer demographics for which the project is intended. The broad scope of the proposed business model as outlined by the project developer would open the immediate area to what we feel is a security risk to our young athletes and their family members. Therefore, we respectfully challenge the city of Lamore's consideration of the project and hereby enter our opposition to the proposed and/or any similar development adjacent to or in close proximity to the gym. And this was signed by Carrie McElroy. She's the owner and manager. So that was received today, and then the owner of fifteen hundred Enterprise Drive, Eric Beard of Beard Motorsports, emailed me today, and he says, I am the owner of Enterprise and Commerce LLC, a multi-unit industrial complex located at fifteen hundred Enterprise Drive. I have grave concerns about the proposed cannabis campus in Lamore Industrial Park. The proposed project is, if passed, will share a common fence with my property. I am not trying to stop the grow and manufacturing aspects of the project, as the city has already set that in motion. I do, however, have a complaint about the park with amphitheater and multi-food truck site, as well as shuttling people in for events. This is very inconsistent with the use of an industrial park. We have made a substantial investment in Lamore and have constructed a one hundred and, one hundred?
One hundred thousand eight hundred.
Okay, one hundred thousand eight hundred square foot facility with two hundred individual, twenty-four hundred square foot units. We have brought several businesses to the area, and our facility is nearly full. No one from the city has ever made the effort to even come and talk with us to see what we have accomplished here. We even asked for first right to purchase the property behind us approximately seven years ago, which is now the proposed site for the cannabis campus. The city, however, figured it was more beneficial to give the property away rather than sell it to someone who has actually invested and completed a development in the industrial park. I would welcome meeting any planning officials, city manager, city council members, et cetera. You think in a town of twenty-six thousand people that some of the city officials would have visited our development within the past six years. I am on-site Monday through Friday, eight AM to five PM. Thank you, Eric Beard.
And then, there was one more. I noticed it wasn't in the packet. That one came a while back. This one is in the packet. It is in your packet? Oh, maybe it went out with the?
This is in the packet, but we did, on June ninth, I received a comment from another tenant at fifteen hundred Enterprise Drive. He's actually with Mako Collision and Paint. And John Galehandro, he says, I am writing today to ask that the city exercise extreme caution in approving this type of facility in our local industrial park. I feel it may, at times, impact our business in a negative manner. I'm assuming the park, along with private events, that there will be consumption, use of cannabis, as I am sure you are already aware, the consumption is through smoking. This does not have a strong odor, this does have a strong odor, and does travel very easily. It may be very offending to my customers and negatively affect my business. If this type of facility is strictly indoor-growing, then that may suffice better in this area. When you are talking greenhouses, which is not a sealed building, you are inviting another element, thieves, into our area. This park should be limited to industrial businesses, not entertainment venues. Thank you for your time, John Galehandro, Mako Collision and Paint.
Thank you, Christie.
Anyone else?
Good evening, gentlemen. Couple, answer a couple of questions there. The food court is intended to be open to the public, is intended as an asset to the business park, and that the, as Judy mentioned, the end of the cul-de-sac will be secured, so all the cannabis operations will be behind secured fences and away from the public, and the food court's intended to be there for our, for our employees to come out to use anybody else in the area. There'll be, it's set up as a food court. I've seen something like this in operation where you have up to six trucks there. They could be either temporarily permanent, kind of, they're full-time, or they could come in for certain days of the week or stuff like that, so, but they will be provided power and all this stuff, so they won't be running generators, they won't be dumping sewage or anything else. So they're, you see the food trucks along the street. This is provided a good place for the food trucks to come, where there's tables for people to sit, you're not eating in your car, open to the public. It will be proposed that they could be used for events later on, but that will be a separate permit for the events, which is not part of this thing. To address a couple of the other things, there is no dispensary as part of this approval, so there will be no cannabis sales on-site. So as far as the gym or anything else, that would be a later action. This is strictly a site plan approval, and all the cannabis stuff will be secured behind fences, secured in the building, so there'll be double or triple security for everything. We propose changing the street from a public street and taking over maintenance herself, so the street can be sealed off and gated, so that people can't even get in there. You'll have to have your car registered to come on-site. So we'll have employment outside the gate. In order to get in where the cannabis is, you've got to come get a badge, you've got to get your car approved to go in the site, so it's very secure. Again, the food trucks are there for the employees. They talked about, any events would have to have a use permit for the event, so that'll be a separate action. Odor, the ordinance does allow for odor. The greenhouses are not open, greenhouses are completely sealed, ventilation, cooling, and everything else, so they're not, these are not hoop houses, greenhouses either, like a red or metal building that have double thick panel walls on the sides of roofs and everything else, so they're not the greenhouses you're used to seeing a lot of places. These are basically buildings with a double-secure opaque panel around it, so you can't even really see what's going on inside of them. It just lets the light in for the growing, which cuts back on energy use and everything else. I think that's the end. I'm here for any other questions that you have, or, Jamie, you have anything?
Anybody have any questions?
Well, just a comment. I've had a question about the odor, which I think you partially addressed. In that part of Lamore, there are times that we get odors from the Prino Cheese Factory that kind of waft over the area of town that I live in. Sometimes there are odors from the sewer plant until that thing is rebuilt and taken care of. So the question was, is this going to be a third one? I think you've just told me that these buildings are totally enclosed. I don't know what kind of filtering you might have or anything like that, but if there's not any smoking use allowed, I don't know what kind of odor would emanate from those buildings during cultivation. And is that different for processing and manufacturing?
Well, the cultivation will be in greenhouses. The ordinance doesn't allow for any odors. There are a number of ways to mitigate that, depending on how this stuff's growing. You can use carbon filters, you can use O-three, there's misters you can put in. I've worked with some guys that do misters, that work with landfills to cut odors down for the greenhouses, but they are sealed, and so we can mitigate the odors if there are odors and take care of that, and part of the ordinance is allowing odors. The manufacturing and the drying is all done in buildings in C-one, D-one environments, C-one, D-two environments for explosion-proof, for ethanol and stuff. Those all have carbon filters on any, the air asset would be exhausted for those things, and they're exhausted through a carbon filter for two reasons. It cuts the odors down, and it cuts the volatiles down. So if you have any issue of release of ethanol or anything like that, you don't want that release atmosphere, the carbon will remove that, and also remove the cannabis odors. So we're required to vent those rooms at one CF per square foot, so there's constant ventilation, constantly run through a carbon filter as those things operate.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
What kind of venues did you guys have in mind? And like, like, how many people will be coming to these potential venues?
I think that's...
Concerts or something?
It could possibly be concerts, it could be cannabis event, you know?
Okay.
Good, really events. At that time, the food court would be shut down to the public for security reasons. So when we do come back for the event license, we'll have the security part for that. But the idea is that the food court would be secured, so that you've got to have a vet, you know, just like going into a bar. It's all different than a bar. You have to have wristbands, probably more secure than a bar. Wristbands as you enter the building, enter the grounds. There's rules on the smoking of it, being in certain areas, it can be in rooms or extended. There's, it's not such a bunch of people around having a barbecue and smoking stuff. It's more controlled, and there's state regulations on that, and I'm sure the city will have some regulations with the use permit.
Thank you.
So the, one gentleman said that you guys will be sharing a fence.
That's not accurate.
No, that, that, that's my question. You will have, like, a wall probably?
We have a block wall. We propose a six-foot wall, or the city standard wall, but I think the city staff's asked to possibly that be raised, so we'll work with staff to raise that up. I mean, I'm sure you don't want something 20-foot tall either. Trade-off there.
Yeah.
So, you know, great differential between that. It'll be probably six to eight feet, depending on which side of the wall you're on. But we do, our site plan does show a main stairy wall around the whole site. That's part of our security. And there will be security cameras. There's all kinds of, there's so much security stuff you can put in now. We even had to, we show an entrance there to be a guard check. It'll probably be done by cameras. Nowadays, with the cameras and everything else, you can, people show up, they talk to the camera, because you can't, with the COVID stuff, you can have people out there anyway. But there's security stuff, there's license plate readers, there's cameras with infrared sensitivity that'll come on if somebody tries to go over the fence, you'll know immediately. So there'll be plenty of security majors. And once you get over the fence, you still got to get in the greenhouse or get in, which will be a little easier than some of the buildings. It's a plastic deal. They'll still have security. In order to get through those doors, you need to cart the internet, or you have to bust the lock. When you get to the buildings where the manufacturing's going on and stuff like that, it'll be double-secured. And you got to get into the building, you got to get into the room that's got the stuff. So the state requires all that. They require cameras on everything, they have cameras on all the processes. Every time somebody touches cannabis, it's under a camera. Those cameras are all available to the state, they'll be available to the police department, they'll be available to our security, onsite security full-time.
And one of the other ones, emails said, the person from the gym was worried about the fact that they were exposing their kids to this operation. But I'm going to assume that if I didn't know what was going on there, I'd have no idea what this, which operation was, correct?
Correct. Like I said, the kids can't get in there. They've got to go over an eight-foot fence, or it's like somebody trying to break in.
Yeah.
We don't want to expose kids, so it's not our idea to expose kids and stuff like that. I have kids of my own, and, you know.
And it is an industrial park.
Yeah.
It's implied industrial.
And the guy was talking about shuttling people in and out for maybe events, but I really don't understand what the issue is there, but...
Again, that'll be part of the event process, but part of that was addressed parking. So the parking onsite past the security gate could be available during an event for parking to meet parking requirements. But that'd be valet park, so people won't be able to drive their cars in there, they'll pull up. And anything behind the security gate, it'll be valet park, will not be open to the public. And then, you know, in order to get cut down on traffic, because when you, when you get to the part that we do do events, there's traffic mitigation, everything else, you'll have to bus people in from the local hotels or partner hotels, so that you cut down on traffic. It's some traffic mitigation. So we provided on the site some bus or shuttle stops close to the fronts. They're not being dropped off in front of their thing. They'll be dropped off right in front, shuttled through the fence, through security.
And any of those require temporary use permit, correct?
Correct. So that'll all be addressed in temporary use permit. But I appreciate your comments. Now we can address all that when we come back with temporary use permit.
Correct, yeah. So that the shuttling people in and out is actually going to alleviate traffic?
We don't want people parking down where their businesses are. We want, the people will park either in our parking lots or in front of our business. We're not going to allow, we don't want to have an event that's parked in front of somebody else's business. We don't want to impact their neighbors like that. So the shuttling is to limit that parking, and then obviously the event will be limited to the number of people we have parking spaces for.
Anybody else? Thank you. Commissioners, any comments?
Well, looking back to a couple of years ago, when we had a discussion, no action taken, because the application was drawn about some cultivation within another part of Lamoore. This seems to be a much better place to do that, in an industrial park, which we have south of 198, rather than on, adjacent to a residential neighborhood.
Right.
So I think that's good planning and good use of that property. And I'm satisfied with the mitigation major we've talked about. And I would like to see this considered and hopefully become good partners with you.
I agree. It, everything looks good. There was a comment on one of the emails about that this isn't consistent with the industrial park, but depends on where... It is, because I've been to industrial parks, you're going to want to pass a rolls. And they have, they have entertainment there, so I think it's well within reason.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for our legal counsel. Did I hear the name Mr. Voorhees? It's one of the owners of this project?
He's the landowner of that park, of the whole entire park.
Okay. I just, just to be safe, that gentleman during my coaching days at Lamoore High School played ball for me, football and baseball. And I haven't seen him in years. I talked to him one time two years ago. His nephew plays for USC, and we talked football. So I haven't had any more other contact with him. I just wanted to make sure, from your perspective, am I allowed to vote, or abstain, or...
From what you've described, no familial relationship, no financial interest, and in fact, it sounds like an extended period of time without even having any contact with this individual. Likely not, though as a commissioner, it's always your prerogative to abstain if you feel that not doing so would present the appearance of a conflict. But from what you've described, it seems quite attenuated that there would be any potential conflict there.
Just want to be safe and sorry.
Okay, so the way we want to do this is in two sections. So the first thing... Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Okay, public hearing is closed. So the first thing we've got to look at is a motion to approve the initial study mitigated negative declaration. That would be first, and we vote on that, and then we will move on to the second.
I'll make a motion to approve the initial study mitigated negative declaration for Venture Place Cannabis Campus and Food Court. And also to adopt resolution number 2020 tag 07, approving major site plan review. Number 2020 tag 03 with the corrections, modifications identified in the attached site plan review comments checklist, and the conditions listed in the resolution.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're just going to do the mitigated negative declaration first.
Okay.
And vote on that, and then we will do the resolution. So Commissioner Franklin has motioned to approve the initial study mitigated negative declaration. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Day. Any other comments before we go to vote? Okay, Commissioner Franklin?
Aye.
Commissioner Day?
Aye.
Commissioner Clement?
Aye.
Commissioner Mead?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So the second motion will be to adopt resolution number 2020-07.
I'll make that motion again. Adopt resolution number 2020 tag 07, approving major site plan review. Number 2020 tag 03 with the corrections and/or modifications identified in the site plan review comments, and the conditions listed in the resolution.
Excuse me, I just need to add one item. The, that one typo that's in there, it's on the second page, and it says it's a 2019, resolution 2019, that there is a correction. It's 2020-03 is the actual number. So adopt with the...
With the modifications plus that correction.
Adopt with the correction to the 2020 tag 03.
Motion by Commissioner Franklin. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Mead, second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Franklin?
Aye.
Commissioner Mead?
Aye.
Commissioner Clement?
Aye.
Commissioner Day?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Thank you guys for coming. Item 7, Director's Report.
Okay, just a few items to update on. We are working with a developer that may move forward on the Victory Village project. That's out by West Hills College. It's 51 units. It's already an approved project. So that may come forward for a major site plan review for their house plans and elevations. We're working with a developer that may want to take over the Fairway Courtyards subdivision. It's about 39 units, I think. It's out by the golf course. The infrastructure, the road and infrastructure's already been put in several years ago, and then it's just been sitting there, and there is someone that's interested in that, so we would bring that to you as well if they submit an application.
Is that the one right off of Iona?
Off of Vine.
Off of Vine and Iona?
Yes, it's, it's just south of Iona.
Right, right.
And then we do have an application from the Brett Fugman. That's the project that's State Route 41 and Hanford Armona Road, that's 16 acres. We do have the tentative parcel map application. So as soon as staff reviews it and the city engineer reviews everything, we'll be bringing that to you. We might be bringing that to you on July 13th at our next meeting, if it's all complete by then. And then we did take the Lennar Westside project to city council. There was a first reading that was approved, and then second reading, there was not a motion. And so staff is, and legal is looking into that. We believe that, that our municipal code doesn't allow us to just not make a decision. There either has to be an approval or deny the project. And so we're looking to see about bringing that back for an actual decision. So we'll see where that goes. But I know that you, and made a motion, you recommended to city council to approve that project, and there was a lot of opposition. We'll see where that goes.
Comment then. First of all, I'd like to say, on record, I was sorely disappointed with the council's lack of action on that item, because I think, as you said, it was brought forward, we just can't ignore it. As far as I'm concerned, city staff and this commission and Lennar did their duty in putting this thing together. It's met all the regulations. It'd be an advantage to the city to have that. So again, I'm disappointed in that. Secondly, Victory Village, which has been around for like 18 years now, in one form or another, happens to be on the west side of Highway 41. Does that mean the Navy's going to run flyovers over the city council when somebody says, maybe we ought to build Victory Village after this all? Okay? When is this dispute, this is the third one that I've been aware of in my short career, 24 years, I realize I'm a newcomer in this city. When is this going to end? So does this mean that Highway 41 has become the boundary line? And where's it going to stop? So I think someone has to stand up and make a decision and not be intimidated at this point in time. Because we've got good relations, and we've given and made concessions. When is it going to stop? Because I mean, this is just a flat-out ignorance of our municipality and the authority and powers that we have in zoning our own city.
Okay, I'm done. Anything else, Judy?
No, that's all I wanted to report.
Thank you. I'd make commissioners' reports and request for information. Commissioner Clement, do you have anything? Commissioner Day?
Yes, one thing, so in the past, I have been highly critical of projects of this nature. This afternoon, I got to go out and meet with the gentleman and with Nathan, the people involved with this particular project. I had a lot of questions. They were obviously very knowledgeable. They provided a lot of insight, you know, educated me on some things regarding this particular project and this, the industry in general. And I was convinced that this would be a good project, you know, despite like my views about the ordinance, you know, that moving forward, that this is a good project that will have long-term benefits for our community. So, yeah, it's been a growing, a growing and personal, you know, development process for myself, to be able to look at different aspects of an industry, right, become more educated, and to make decisions, you know, and to have the opportunity to be part of a group that makes decisions that hopefully moves our, moves our community forward. So thank you for the information and for taking the time to speak with me today, guys. Really appreciate that. I learned a lot from it. And then hopefully, the venture will be beneficial to y'all, and will mutually beneficial for our community and for you as well.
From our standpoint, we want to continue that relationship, so not to you, but don't be shy. Other questions, please?
Commissioner Franklin? Commissioner Mead? I just want to thank you guys for coming tonight. You pretty much covered everybody's concern in any of these emails, plus anybody, any of the concerns we had. They're all, you guys done your homework. I can tell you guys know what you're doing, so. Hope, hope everything goes well. And it is time to close the meeting.